Okay. Oh, man. I call this special meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or by joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being recorded on Zoom and will be aired later on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 in city limits. I'm going to cut this script down and just move on to Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando sea solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información llama el secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Before we start, I wanted to say that if people see me coughing a bit, I was ill at the last meeting and participated remotely. I'm still coughing and sneezing a bit, but I did take a COVID test. I took four COVID tests in the last eight days, all negative, including about 24 hours ago, so I don't think anybody is at risk from me. It's a sinus infection, which I get every year. And the second thing I wanted to say was, we're going to add a, after the two council goals, we're going to add a council reports section at the end of this meeting. And with that, I will turn it over to our Climate and Natural Resources Manager Natalie Roberts to give us the council goal update on climate. Did I say Roberts? Rogers?
We know what you meant. Well, hi, everyone. Good evening, Council. My name is Natalie, and I am the Climate and Natural Resources Manager for the city over in our Public Works Department. I don't need to hold it. Okay. I am not very great with tech stuff, so I'm sorry if I break things. I think I got it. If I just do that? Oh, okay. I take that back. I always trust Nicole. Oops. No, I'm sorry. I think you can just take it from here, Nicole. Thank you.
Don't say you trust me.
You're doing an excellent job. Sorry, everyone. Try that one more time. Very cool. Thank you. So tonight, I'm just here to give an update, kind of a quarterly update, on some of the projects that are maybe new, maybe revisiting tonight related to our Climate Action Plan. It's also been now five years since the adoption of Milwaukee's Climate Action Plan. Earlier, hopefully, everyone received kind of a summary report of the actions that we've been implementing so far. I'm just going to be talking maybe about some project highlights and then kind of some of the actions that they're related to, but definitely revisit that report for kind of an update on every action of the 53 city-led actions that we have, or you're welcome to reach out to me, and I'm happy to meet and kind of give you a run-through of everything we've been doing. I'll also share that, you know, a lot of these projects, these are things that Public Works and myself and team have been working on, but this is also a big coordination with every department here at the city. And in particular, that Climate Action Update Report has so much from pretty much every single city team here, so it's a big citywide effort. Ooh, we're going there. We got it. Cool. Okay. So just to remind us, you know, what are our goals? So I actually have four goals here, and that's because we have our three kind of climate carbon emission goals, but then also kind of our honorary third goal, which is an action in our Climate Action Plan, which is around tree canopy. So by 2030, we want to reach net zero electricity. What that means is no carbon emissions, or at least, you know, offset emissions from electricity by 2030. 2035 is for net zero buildings. 2040 is our 40% tree canopy coverage, and then 2045 is reaching carbon neutrality community-wide, and that includes transportation and all the other kind of sectors of greenhouse gases that you kind of usually see emitted out of a community, and that actually is shown on the right. This is actually from our 2020 greenhouse gas inventory, and I linked, in case anyone's watching, the full presentation on that inventory below, and it's also overviewed in our climate update. But it's just a really interesting chart to see kind of the major sectors of emissions in Milwaukee and how they're trending. I like to always remind us that there's a really big asterisk on this, knowing that Milwaukee is a small community, there's a lot of assumptions built into inventories. Just because the smaller you go in a spatial area, the more you're using averages and things like county-wide census track data, state emissions data. And so we can make our best guess, but really, we should be looking at trends and kind of the big highlights to guide our work, which, based on this inventory, you know, we've been seeing that we've been having some great progress in building energy emission reduction. That's through a lot of programs that we're implementing, that's also through regional changes for renewable or carbon-free electricity. Transportation, though, we did have an increase, and that's tied to a few things. One is transportation is just up in emissions kind of statewide and region-wide, but also there was some data accounting issues that it was that our data sources kind of reformatted and went and did some quality analysis and quality assurance on their own data, and they had to make some changes. So we actually went back and redid our 2016 emissions inventory with that new data, so that's why we saw that spike. But another thing, too, to keep in mind on this data is in 2020, we had some interesting things happen, and the changes maybe in our, you know, data lives in the pandemic may have influenced some of this. So it's just something that you need to be, you know, mindful of when we're looking at these inventories, but overall, the message we're walking away with is we're making progress on building energy, we should keep going in that direction to push it down. Transportation's increasing, so there needs to be maybe more visibility and work in the transportation sectors. And then you can see the pinks on the very right, those are consumption-based inventories, so that's, you know, goods and purchases shipped into Milwaukee and purchased. That's a very challenging section and sectors to address because those are very much behavior-based, and so there's a lot more education and kind of like work with community members on those. So now I'm just going to kind of go project by project. I'm going to try to tie it back to the topic in the Climate Action Plan, and then at the very bottom, I'm going to list either the action or the resolution kind of directing this work. So the first project I wanted to update you on was the municipal green tariff, munitariff, green tariff, you might hear these terms. Really what this is, is a project that we started now four years ago, based off of Utah's HB 411, which was their green energy programming to essentially use economies of scale to aggregate the loads of jurisdictions to bulk purchase renewable energy. The idea being, right, let's just all go in together and let's actually make an opt-out product, so that way we can increase that participation. And in Utah, they actually defined opt-out windows, but for us, we're being a little more flexible to work with just Oregon's law and the existing programs. So what we're exploring with Portland General Electric, PGE, is a new voluntary renewable product that would be opt-out, but it would be essentially specific to a jurisdiction's needs and wants and design. So Milwaukee could essentially create a new voluntary renewable product, and it could be both, you know, bulk purchase of power, so that's called a power purchase agreement, a PPA, or it could even be community programming and other kind of things that haven't before been included in voluntary products, but maybe more community-specific. I've been working with multiple jurisdictions, the Public Utility Commission, the PUC, on this now for a while. I will say it's very complicated and technical because it's a lot of energy statute, energy law, and at the stage that this project is in, it's very much a process and being kind of formulated to fit what the PUC needs to see and what HB 2021, which was where the legislation that allowed for this product to be developed, it was requiring. So right now, I kind of have this multi-step process laid out, but this is my understanding based on the conversations I've had with other jurisdictional staff and PUC staff, and it gets a little squishy because that's one of the challenges that I've seen is just a lack of very explicitly outlined steps in this. So that's something we're continually kind of pushing PUC staff to help us with and to help us understand. But let me go by step by step, and I'll kind of explain what's going on a little bit. So we're right now in kind of the step zero, and that's because this is the pre-work happening. So the tariff, an umbrella tariff, what that is, is a tariff is kind of, at least is how it's been described to me, in very simple terms, so if there's any energy law experts listening, I apologize. It's essentially the financial contract document to allow certain expenditures of funds on both power procurement, programming, and essentially how those funds are being allowed to be collected and distributed. So in this case, the tariff is going to be very much like, how can we get money? How can we spend money? Who can you spend money on? Who can't you spend money on? And what are the rules around spending that money and who gets to make those decisions? Things that have come up before in conversations with city staff and PGE and PUC are questions around crediting, meaning like, if you're an early, I apologize, if you're an early investor, do you get any funds back? Things around low-income assistance, things around what type of energy is allowable to be purchased. These are all hopefully going to be captured in this tariff language. A tariff usually gets tied to a product. It's like the financial contract to say, hey, this is how this product can be designed. A tariff doesn't necessarily include everything explicitly about that product, right? So there's all sorts of different agreements and things, and those are captured in a participation agreement, which I'll talk about later. But for now, pretty much, we're heavy in this financial contracting-type language discussion. Right? We're also working with these other jurisdictions, and the idea that is moving forward is an idea called an umbrella tariff. And this is kind of a term that's being used to explain a single tariff contract document which will allow multiple jurisdictions to develop their own unique product. And that's just, originally, we had this idea, which was to simplify it particularly for smaller communities that don't necessarily have that negotiating and bargaining power and that technical experience. I think just from a simplicity point in that this is kind of a new model and idea that's going to be going through the PUC that they've never had to work on before. They are wanting to consolidate as much as possible under a single tariff, so that way it's a larger discussion that happens once. We've explored things like, let's make it easier, and we don't want all these complicated things, let's send through a smaller, simpler tariff. That was not, I think they wanted to stick to this umbrella tariff kind of idea. And so, that's okay. The thing is, the tariff is actually drafted and submitted by PGE. It's not drafted and submitted by the cities. It's because it's whoever's purchasing the power, whoever is kind of running that product. So right now, PGE is working with jurisdictions to develop this tariff. We're providing feedback and comments back. At a stage, they are going to bring it to the PUC to start a formal approval process, and that's step one. So we've been in quite a few years on this step zero. Hopefully, they're going to be submitting this to the PUC in the next quarter. They're, you know, it kind of is a little wiggly, but I think it depends on how much feedback they're getting back from the cities and the other jurisdictions. The, once PGE submits the tariff to the PUC, that starts a very large process that's kind of formatted to meet statute requirements. That's, you know, we're going to have stakeholders involved, including the Citizens Utility Board Cub, other kind of regular players who like to have that engagement with energy decisions at the state level. So, and then we might submit testimony saying that we support this or we like this language. Coming out of it, the PUC would either approve the tariff or approve a revised version of the tariff. It's important to note, just because a tariff is approved, it does not mean a product, we're committed to any sort of product, or that we've designed any sort of product. So it's really just setting up the ability for us to essentially collect revenue, or PGE to collect revenue for a product like this. It's not committing the city to having anything. That's where kind of the step two kicks in of a participation agreement. That participation agreement is really where the meat of the product development happens for each jurisdiction. From what I have heard, it is okay still for multiple jurisdictions to share a participation agreement. It's just, there's some unique requirements tied to the legislation around approvals and kind of the paperwork to it. But, you know, the participation agreement is really where a lot of the decision-making and defining of what we want happens. That is still a bit of a mystery on what needs to be included in that. That's kind of some of the information we're trying to tease out from the PUC. I think it's just important to know, like, this is the first of its kind in Oregon, so it's, we're kind of figuring it out how it goes. Another thing out of our participation agreement that I'm seeing in the tariff that's still a bit of a question mark is this idea of a governing body, meaning that there needs to be some decision-makers when it comes to creating a product and who's kind of making changes over time. Still don't necessarily know all the requirements behind that, so we'll just be needing to keep council in the loop to see who that should consist of, what that looks like. And then, you know, the participation agreement, just so folks kind of are aware of the options on the table, really the idea is that you have the big chunk, which is your power purchase agreement, so that's like solar in eastern Oregon, which we've talked about before as being kind of in our interest, but also is maybe this community programming element of, you know, energy retrofits, hot water heater replacements, tree plantings, stuff like that. The challenge being those come with usually a higher price tag, so it's going to be a question of what does the community want, and if we had a product, what would we want to explore? So right now, we are waiting on that draft, well, we have that draft language in hand. We're looking at it. We're kind of highlighting any big concerns and questions. It's not super thrilling, but it is just kind of the, like I said, the real potatoes of just how is the money going to get passed around and what's excluded and what's allowed? So those are the big things I'm watching for, along with huge barriers to maybe small cities implementing and running something like this. Those are kind of my big things I'm being mindful of. And then, once we have a draft tariff submitted to the PUC, I think that's when we'll be needing to notify council that there might be more of an engagement process with the PUC if we want to participate. And then tying it back to it, the reason why we're doing this is because we have an action that says we're going to work with PGE to reach our 2030 goal. Are there any questions on the tariff? And I'll be coming back, or we'll be sending lots of information to come. It's a very technical document. I still have to ask a lot of questions all the time on it. Quite a few, yes. There's at least in the core group who are in conversation with PGE and PUC, and this group was polled because these are cities with adopted climate goals or cities who are very close to adopting climate goals. We have pretty much every metro city represented in that group. I have heard from PGE that if everyone in, every city in their territory who had a climate goal was interested in participating, that'd be 70% of their territory. So it's quite a few communities who are actually interested. What I don't know is on Pacific Power's side of who maybe around the state might be interested in, just because PGE is running this first tariff, so it would only at least apply for PGE municipalities or jurisdictions.
You said this is still in, thank you for the presentation so far, step zero right now, it's still there?
Yes.
We have, we're not, there's not even an idea of a product or...
So we have had conversations with council before, and the PGE actually did a community survey on what residents would be interested in. I think it's a conversation we need to come back to council on, just because things change, and I think really, in the participation agreement is where we're going to be hearing rates and what the cost impacts are going to be, and I think that that's going to influence it. The original idea was go with, you know, the most affordable and most kind of, I want to say, carbon-free option out there, so we'd be looking probably at, you know, solar in eastern Oregon, so it's tied to our grid, and we can get a big old economies of scale, hopefully clawing on to someone else's. We weren't even looking at community programming, because again, we were like, let's keep it as cheap, cheap, cheap. Who knows? That might change with kind of the state moving towards decarbonization. A lot of utilities are buying solar, meaning that there's a lot of demand, so we'll just have to look at it, I think, when the time comes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Sorry. I had a couple of questions, and one of them was, are you seeing, are the cities fairly much in alignment? Are there any points of contention between what some cities want and other cities want?
Yeah, I think the biggest divide I'm seeing, or at least difference, I should say, between participating jurisdictions is concern around simplicity versus complex programs, and I think that comes with more staff to manage, maybe more complex programming. And so talking to other smaller jurisdictions, there's kind of a like, well, let's just go the simplest approach, which usually is that bulk power purchase. But I think a lot of cities are also excited about maybe leveraging these dollars, which, you know, the nice part is that they would be consistent, arguably, you know, year after year, you would be collecting that revenue if you didn't have a lot of participation dropouts or anything. You know, on programming, especially filling gaps where there is, but whether or not that programming matches city to city, I haven't been able to tell yet. We've, we've kind of been keeping it more on like the high level. It's a good question, though. I know we've been partnering with Beaverton on a lot of this, and I think we're pretty fairly matched in what we're exploring, at least to start.
Okay. So do I understand, I mean, the terms like, you know, product and tariff and all that are a little wonky, but if we get through step one and we have PUC approval, it sounds like different cities could have different kinds of participation agreements. We're not, we don't have to be in lockstep.
No, we don't need to. And we would be working with PGE to essentially develop a new product, which could include programs and power. We keep it product because that's the term for the different rate schedules. Think of the voluntary products you can sign up for. It's like a subscription, right? And it really could be unique to every jurisdiction. I think that this is where, though, you know, smaller cities who might be trying to be like mindful of cost, might be wanting to be more similar, just because, you know, for every unique program requires administration and the dollars that go into outreach and education, and so it would probably, in my personal opinion, benefit us to find similarities and similar interests across jurisdictions, so that way we can kind of pool our resources and save money there. But, but we haven't even really gotten to the discussion of like, what does each unique city want? And I think that's because we're still in this very kind of, you know, we don't even know it's on the menu of specifics, but we'll get there.
And do we, I mean, as you noted, you've been working on it for, it looks like Peter wants to say something. Should I wait for my follow-up question? Do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Am I good?
It's red, so I think you're okay.
I just wanted to mention, it's been a very iterative process where it feels like almost we've gone 360 degrees like twice on what this tariff is going to look like, and, you know, going from a simple, sort of a simple approach, as Natalie's talked, to this umbrella tariff and some of the initial discussions we've had of like how PGE is going to account for the dollars and where they're going to put those. It's been like, that was what we recommended three years ago, and they said, no, we can't do that. Now it's like, oh, well, this sounds like a good idea. Let's do it this way. So it's been sort of like this iterative process because, because everybody has lots of ideas. They're not quite sure how the PUC is going to consider those suggestions as they put their tariff together. So there's been a lot of sort of repeat discussions and iterative discussions and trying to sort of sort through, along with this, the changes to the RPS that are in statute right now. And what's the other, the other, the other in, how's about 2021?
Oh, 2021, and the RPS is the Renewable Portfolio Standard, so that's the requirement for investor-owned utilities like PGE to have a percentage of carbon-free or renewable electricity already. So that HB 2021 required it for investor-owned utilities to be 100% carbon-free by 2040. So the PUC is trying to have to balance that with the need of, or the interest of cities moving further faster.
And, and that 2040 date is important. I mean, it's important for a couple of reasons, but from PGE and the PUC's perspective, it's like, okay, we're going to build, you know, generation assets, clean generation renewable energy assets, and they'll still be available in 2040, and how do those get taken care of when everything has to be 100%? So, so it gets, it gets pretty complicated.
Yeah. And when you talk about the, you know, the cycle and the four years, is it PGE that's really been driving the train, or is it PGE and PUC? Or are we, is PGE really driving the train until they make the submission?
On, on just the project over the last, you know, I would actually say that we are, in a way. And, oh yeah, we've been, we've been spending a good amount of time on this because, you know, why we were excited and why we still are excited is that this is a really great way for us to make big emission cuts with not a lot of complex programming and administration and everything. It's kind of similar to how we can just bulk buy our 100% carbon-free electricity for our operations, and now we're carbon-free on operations for electricity. And so when we were first starting this, this process and this project, it was just a, let's work directly with PGE, let's come up with this product idea. We had graphs, all those sorts of beautiful things. And then there was the question, maybe you might remember, mayor of like, do we need legislation? Are we, PGE might need legislation, and then that kind of launched us into a legislative process with HB 2021, which overall is a win, I think, for the region, but it just kept kind of slowing things down and making it a little more complex. And so we're, we're kind of coming back around at 12 o'clock again of what do we want and discussions, and I think Milwaukee has at least to start a stronger idea of what we might be interested in limitations, while I think other jurisdictions who are new to the conversation are just starting to ask. And the nice, so the umbrella tariff is intended on being very general. tariff is intended on being very general. So that way everyone could feel like they're being represented. It just does mean that it's taking longer and it's just a little more complicated than we were initially hoping for. But we're still here.
Okay. Tell us your story, Bonnie.
It's gonna be fun. With that said, is there, like, has there been any estimation or discussion on when they anticipate getting to step one?
Yes. So their, PGE has expressed that they are hoping to submit tariff language. They said winter 2024. So it could be in the next quarter, few months. And we're hoping, I think PUC was expecting maybe an eight-month process, approval process. Of course, it's a big process that involves all sorts of stakeholders. So that might, we'll see if that, that's true still. I'm guessing a year or so. But the nice part is, parallel to that, we could be talking to PGE about what's in our participation agreement and starting to work on that at the same time. So once the tariff, which is like the big gate, is passed, then we can be a lot faster on kind of developing product.
And their target date to submit a tariff to PUC has shifted over the, over the years. I mean, it's
Yeah, I think last year it was early this year.
Right.
Because it talked about the filing, early 2024, right? So what does early mean?
I'm, they're wanting feedback by the end of this week.
Nice.
And we, I think there was a question of whether or not it'd be submitted by the end of this year, or would it not be in January, February of, of next year. But as Peter mentioned, I think there's, sometimes that gets nudged down. So, yes.
Thank you.
Of course. And it's super complicated and I'm still learning a lot. So if you have questions, feel free to send it to me. I'm happy to reach out to PUC staff and others to get an answer. The next, maybe just hopefully a little less complicated, but still a little technical, is around building performance standards. So we adopted a home energy score, residential energy scoring program, right? That's kind of the residential version of this. But this one has a little bit more oomph to it, is how I'll describe it, for commercial buildings, kind of larger buildings. So building performance standards are for existing buildings. And it's a way to essentially assess their energy usage, emissions, a quality related to their performance. And from that, then you can set a benchmark, right, that buildings have to meet. So we were really fortunate to partner with Earth Advantage, New Buildings Institute, as well, as well as quite a few different jurisdictions and community-based organizations to get funds to explore building performance standards and how they would work in our jurisdiction, as well as our state. So we're actually receiving $240,000 in funds over, over the next three years. And while we still kind of need to work with our partners and, of course, US DOE is the one kind of implementing this, is the RECKI grant, which is the Resilient and Efficient Codes Implementation Dollars from US DOE. We still need to kind of wait till those budgets are firmed up and talk to them about scope. But we're hoping to be able to use it on things like building energy outreach and education and kind of align this with discussions that we've been having around energy usage in Milwaukee. Another thing that I didn't mention in my staff report was, we actually have legislation adopted in the state. This happened this year, HB 3409, which is the Oregon Energy Performance Standard. And this is a, a energy benchmarking for buildings, but it only applies to buildings over 35,000 square feet. I believe there might be some 20,000 square foot thresholds in there for a few subsets of the Tier Two. But it's for commercial, but it also covers multifamily residential, hospitals, schools. But, you know, when we were exploring, for example, our, our bag ban back in the day, 10,000 square feet was already kind of a, a big, big building for Milwaukee. 35,000 is going to be a lot. So this grant, pretty much program and kind of what we're going to explore is, what a smaller building size makes sense in Milwaukee? What would the benefit be? What, what are stakeholder opinions? And essentially kind of leading us in that, that discussion, both being involved in the state setting these benchmarked performance standards, how would that look? They're actually in the first year, I gave, in the staff report, there's kind of this really big table of funds. But in the first year, the idea is to just really be involved as an advocate in a state process to firm up these building performance standards. The second year is implementation statewide, but then also starting to discuss with municipalities, what would they be interested in, doing a lot of analysis. And then the third year, actually going in the community, pretending, testing, experimenting, how would this work? What would it look like? And so it'd be pretty much a ramp up of involvement in Milwaukee, starting with the state level, kind of expanding as the years go on. And so I did want to also highlight that if you're interested in learning more about the state performance standards, ODO is actually doing a virtual, I think, stakeholder meeting tomorrow in the morning. I'm going to unfortunately have to miss it, but I think they're recording it and I'll see if I can find the recording of it. But this is at the state one. And so our RECKI grant is exploring local implementation. And, and the fun part is, we can tie it straight back to our action, which is adopt a commercial scoring program. Also note too, City of Portland has a 35,000 square foot commercial performance reporting program. But the key part with this is that there is an ability to actually require folks and buildings to reduce emissions, reduce energy usage to meet these benchmarking standards. The reason why I'm using emissions, energy, et cetera, is because that's yet to be defined. Benchmarking could be energy use intensity, it could be total emissions, which is, you know, energy neutral, right? Electricity versus natural gas. So it's up to us to define it. So we're right at the start of this process. All right. I'll be back is a great way to say.
Notice that you say commercial for HB 3409, not industrial? I guess I thought it included industrial as well.
It's just not, I didn't split it. I think it's not the zoning, commercial, industrial. It's just overall, I think, commercial and residential is how it's split up in the statute.
Because I mean, I do think we have quite a few of our big industrial buildings that are going to have to participate in this. I, I mean, I was thinking about that back last summer when they were passing this, you know, Precision Cast Parts, Oregon Tool, you know, there's, there's a fair number of, of Milwaukee businesses that will fall within that. Do we get any kind of notice? I mean, I know from the way that was written, we don't have, as a city, the obligation. It's really between the property and the state. But do we get any kind of notice of who they're?
I'm not sure. I think that will be explored in this first year. And I'll also say too, you know, I haven't looked into necessarily how they're defining the square footage. That could also affect potentially who's kind of in and who's out. Is, you know, is this, you know, indoor, quote-unquote, livable office space, indoor spaces? Does it include outside square footage, right? If it's exposed, maybe like an industrial setting. So I think there's still some questions to, to answer. And I think, I'm hoping that this first year is, is where we'll kind of get some of those.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. For, once these standards are developed, is, are there plans to have funding available to provide these commercial buildings and these multifamily residential with grant opportunities to get them in those standards? Because we all know they're probably just either pass the buck to the people living in those buildings, or they'll fire people to make, to cut costs. So is there, do you know if there's going to, if they're planning on any of that stuff happening?
I don't know. So I'll have to look into that and I'll ask around.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Let me just write that down. Okay. So this luckily is a really quick one, which is just strategic energy management. So this is a, an Energy Trust of Oregon program that's available for commercial, Oregon is buildings, especially building owners to participate in. The city participates in the SEM program. And pretty much what they do, and it's very hard to see, I apologize, but they help you come up with kind of a building efficiency plan. And then by participating, like one-on-one with their team, and you have monthly meetings, and you can kind of have like even an, an energy usage charts that they'll help track for you, you can actually apply and get incentives for making both improvements as well as milestones along the, the program. And so the city has leveraged this partnership and participation on things like lighting upgrades and, and other kind of efficiency improvements on our facilities. Right now, I was hoping to pull some accounting data, but we're not able, it's like a unique account. And so I'll have to get that for you later. But I can say I did talk to our facilities team around this building in particular and participating, or having this building participate in the program. Pretty much the first thing we need to do is actually get that one-year benchmark, meaning what is the current energy usage intensity, just as is right now for a year? And then once we have that one-year benchmark, then we can actually start working on incentives, at least through the SEM program, to kind of leverage those dollars. Already, our facilities team has been going around and doing a few LED replacements or replacing light bulbs with LEDs. And then we've also just been exploring things like, you know, HVAC upgrades and what would that include? So it's part of this larger kind of resolution around decarbonizing city-owned buildings, but it's also just cost savings. That's really great for the city to have. And Energy Trust of Oregon has residential, commercial, industrial incentives. So I really encourage everyone to take a look and take advantage of them.
Maybe just, I'll turn that on. Maybe just a little bit more on that, on that benchmarking at this building. So, you know, we've, we've, we've been in this building now since mid-September. So we're, we're wanting to look to get a full calendar year of, of energy use, both with the winter and summertime and see what that looks like. And that helps us get that sort of foundational baseline to say, okay, this building uses this much energy. What are the opportunities to, to, to reduce energy usage in, in the winter and summer and, or through lighting, through lighting improvements, as Natalie mentioned. So including adding new control systems to help us, you know, adjust, adjust the heating and cooling in the building, setting the temperatures to see, you know, it takes time for the new, the staff in the building to figure out what's the comfort level, you know? Is it, is it too cold? Is it too hot? And we sort of set sort of that, that baseline as we learn how the building sort of functions, you know, in, in the morning when the systems come on, and how's it functioning in the, in the late afternoon when the sun's beating down on it. So we're going to get that foundational baseline. And from there, we can start to make adjustments to make energy efficiency, you know, improvements, or, or just by adjusting controls, save money and, and reduce energy use like that. And if we hit certain targets, we get incentives from the Energy Trust. So over the years, since I've been here, we've, we almost are always getting a quarterly or bi, bi-annual incentive. Not a whole lot of money, but you know, a thousand, $2,000 at, at a time, a check that we hit a target. And some of, some of the incentives are based on actual energy reduction. Some of them are based on setting up, putting policies in place, setting up, helping people change their behaviors in the workspace to, to save money as well. So it's been a good program.
Okay. So now we're diving into, you've, you've wrapped up your building energy section. Congratulations. Now you're into vehicles and fuels, or transportation sector. Milwaukee is rocking it when it comes to EVs. We have quite a few already in our fleet, and we're actually getting more, it seems, every quarter, which is fantastic. So we have quite a few, as you can see, EVs already. And, you know, one of the, the actions this is tied to that I'm highlighting here is optimizing the city's light duty fleet and replacing the least efficient vehicles with more efficient vehicles. I'll say there's another action around heavy-duty vehicles and actually kind of transitioning from diesel towards electrification. Of course, that's always kind of, we have to be watching the market for technology, but there's actually been some exploration into things, like we've been looking at electric sweeper, right?
Yeah. This past fall, we, we were looking at a, an electric, an EV sweeper. And we tested it out for a day. That certainly holds some promise. It's, it's a, a very new model here in the US. There's not, I think there were three other communities. I, I think they were all on the East Coast, two in Massachusetts and one in Maryland that had, had taken delivery and had been using it. So we're wanting to, we don't want to be the, the first, we want somebody else to work out the problems that they're having. But it certainly holds promise. They've been, they've been using these over in Europe. It's a European manufacturer. So, and they've had success over there with, with EV sweepers. Smaller, more like our small Bravo sweeper, as opposed to the bigger, the bigger sweeper that we have.
I hope to get to ride in it one day. And then, you know, to support kind of all of these EVs in our own city fleet. So we have a few different types of chargers on city-owned property or the city owns. I wanted to highlight that we have our three public chargers. So these are for anyone in the community to come and charge. We have those at Letting Library, JCB or Johnson Creek Building, and our Public Safety Building. We also have a public charger on Jackson Street that's actually next to Electric Avenue. Electric Avenue is also on city-owned property, but PGE is the one managing those chargers. But we also have EV chargers, just for the public to know, on for operations only. And that's just because those are where all of these EVs are plugged into right now. And so we have an operations EV charger here at City Hall. We have quite a few, three at JCB, probably one at the Public Safety Building.
Public Safety Building.
And so, you know, we're constantly kind of adding these chargers. And the idea is to make sure that we have a sufficient amount of chargers for the vehicles that we're trying to charge. And so far, I think that we're ahead of the curve, talking to kind of other jurisdictions. And part of that is because we have a very good relationship with our, our fleets team. So.
And those, the, the three public chargers in, in the bullet there, those, those were installed, the PSB Library and, and JCB chargers, those were installed this summer, went live this summer. And they are, we charge for that use though. They're not, those ones aren't free. So if somebody, you have to use an app or swipe a card to, to pay for the, the energy. The one at, on Jackson Street, we don't charge for.
Are you worrying about how much they're used?
We do. We have that available.
I'd be curious to see that.
It's generally, it depends on the location. And we can certainly bring some information back when we have some, maybe some additional months' worth of data that we can take a look at.
That'd be great.
I just, you know, with trying to get people to get more electric vehicles, and you might not know the answer to this question, but does PGE offer any help or incentives for apartment complexes to get electric chargers so they, you know, people don't have to go somewhere and have an app to swipe and pay?
There, yes. There are a variety of different funding sources. PGE has quite a few, there's like grant applications for maybe more unique or complex projects. And those are both, you know, drive change grant funds, they have matching grant funds. There's also incentives just on like per charger that you can receive from PGE, the state. And then on top of that, PGE is working on programs to help with kind of the installation cost of the chargers. And that's really around kind of the, the infrastructure underground and the cost to get that going, and then letting folks maybe own or manage the chargers above ground. So there's quite a few different programs ongoing. I think honestly, the challenge is keeping straight what's what and where to apply for it. The state does have a, they've, they've created, I think it's called Go Electric Oregon, Oregon Electric, a state website that's kind of supposed to serve as like a dashboard of all these incentives. I always recommend folks go, also check out Fourth Mobility. That's a nonprofit that we've worked with before for EV drive ride-alongs. And they have kind of the up-to-date information on incentives. I know that I know that there's ones for multifamily housing, the challenge is that like, of course, there's a spectrum of housing types, and when it comes to incentives, it's, what I've seen is actually the more complex, then you kind of qualify for those competitive grants, but then it's the number of chargers increase, and then it ends up kind of being hard to have the money kind of play out. And then, the smaller ones, it's more of those individual charger-by-charger incentives, it's almost like you're treated more like a single-family residential kind of unit. The next slide I'm going to talk about, though, with the on-pole charging, is kind of PGE's, another PGE solution to address some of those challenges.
Just to piggyback on Council President Nick Demas's questions and points, is there any thought about maybe expanding Electric Avenue to the east side of town, maybe in the Milwaukee marketplace, so that way, if these apartments, because the renters have no power or authority in determining if the complex is going to get these chargers, and if the apartments are going to put in for that, is there a way that we can at least have an Electric Avenue that, you know, renters who have these EVs can at least go there instead of having to come across town and go to downtown? Because most of the time, it's full down here anyways, because people coming off McLaughlin, so anything about expansion, even the poles, that's great, but they're just Level 2 chargers, and then some of them need to need faster charging, and there's just a lack of infrastructure on the east side.
Yeah. You know, I think that the challenge that we have, so, there's a few things that we've done over time in Milwaukee, right? We've made zoning requirements for new developments, a lot of new development focus, thinking about multifamily and the requirements for parking lots. It's always existing, that's the hardest part, because of that underground infrastructure cost, and then the charger cost, which is why we try to encourage it on new development, because it's so much cheaper. Fast chargers are, one thing I didn't realize before, kind of working in this space, was how expensive they are. It was like a quote for $130,000 for a fast charger over at Milwaukee JCB, and that's because it requires a tremendous amount of power and infrastructure. So, it's, we've explored kind of having something on city-owned property because we own that property, and I guess the question would be, how do we play in the private property space of, you know, influencing, you know, assets being built out? I think that we definitely should encourage folks to reach out to PGE through these different kind of grant funds and explore that partnership. Electric Avenue is on city-owned property, which I think is why we were able to put that infrastructure in, but that's something, you know, we definitely would coordinate with our community development team on.
Yeah, I'm sure there's an opportunity there for a public-private partnership. I'm sure the property owner's there, because that would obviously bring more attention to the Milwaukee marketplace, which if you drive by, there's completely dead. You know, there's an incentive there, I think, business-wise, economically, there that could be used to entice them to want to work with us, not solely alone on their own, but in partnership with us to get something going on that side of town.
And I would add, in past discussions that I've had with PGE about expansion of their Electric Avenue, they are, they were limited to the, I think, the ones that they installed in 2018 and 2019, ours being one of them, and so that was limited by the PUC, they had specific authority going, I think, usually putting it through a tariff that was developed for a limited number of Electric Avenue fast charging stations that the utility owns and operates. So, as Natalie was going to talk a little bit about these pole chargers, they have some limited authority to go through a demonstration and a pilot program to see how effective those are as well, so...
I mean, even if there was other companies, though, right? Because Electrify America, EV Go, I mean, there's a lot of them, and the one down here, at least the one that, at least Shell that's taking the payment, which is odd, that's a fossil fuel company taking your payment, so that's also another question.
They bought a EV charging company, they consumed, I think it's, EV, I forget what it is, but yeah, they actually purchased one, so it's a little weird.
There's a multitude of options, and PGE is not one, is all I'm saying. There might be an opportunity there to at least provide that for that side of town.
Definitely. Yeah, and I'll add to Peter's comment, it's an odd space, and I think PGE is trying to figure out, too, because the idea is that, you know, they're allowed to be a monopoly because they are an investor in utility, and they're like regulated by the PUC, and I think the uncomfort now is them expanding into the transportation sector, which is just the times we're working in, that's a little odd, yeah. But, you know, one of the nice things, oh, sorry.
I want to hear the nice thing. Go ahead.
I'll explain it, but first, I want to maybe answer your question.
Well, so I was just thinking, I sit on the Redevelopment Commission Community Advisory Committee, and we're working out the guidelines for the storefront improvement and tenant improvement grant program, and I'm thinking about maybe some storefronts that are up in the Milwaukee marketplace area. I wonder if this might be a good opportunity for kind of fusion between those programs so that we can think about EV infrastructure as part of a storefront improvement? Then we could use your iPhones.
I have had conversations with Joseph on that, so as looking as an opportunity.
Conversations?
No, he was, he was...
Blink twice, you're positive.
No, he had a, it was positive, so it's a consideration.
Okay, well, then, I know he's not here to confirm or deny our ideas, but if you're okay with it, I'll send him a note. All right.
So, you know, one of the projects that we've been working with PGE on, outside of kind of the private property, is actually on public right-of-way. And this idea was supposed to be, from PGE, was to help address the challenge, which is if you are living in an apartment or multifamily housing, and you're on these streets where there's not maybe the luxury of having parking spaces, or maybe the ability to install EV charging on existing parking spaces, which is to leverage utility poles, which are, you know, are already tapped into power right there, to install a Level 2 charger and actually have on-street parking, but having a charger on the street. And so, PGE reached out to the city, and they said, would you be interested in doing this study? And of course, we're like, yeah. And so, we got four chargers to go in the initial study, and then almost super fast after that, they wanted to start on Phase 1, which added 17 more chargers around the city. So, we actually, in the last year, year and a half, year, we've just had 21 new chargers, Level 2 chargers, go up on Milwaukee streets, which, you know, these are owned by PGE, we do have an agreement, just using the right-of-way and on maintenance and outreach and education, you know, the city's going to be helping promote and advertise where some of these chargers are. But they're already, I think PGE is seeing that they're being used, they're not necessarily a moneymaker, you know? I mean, I think the cost of maintaining the infrastructure is pretty high, but talking to PGE, they felt like their role was really to help maybe, you know, increase access to charging, not necessarily make a profit off of it. And so, I think that they've been focusing the locations of these chargers, they have a, you know, they tell me that, or they've told us that out of 100 utility poles explored, maybe a handful, one to five, might actually be eligible based on age and what's around them. But they've really been prioritizing areas with affordable housing, multifamily housing, areas near transit corridors. That does mean in Milwaukee, we see a lot of these being on the west side of Milwaukee, knowing that we need to have more on the east side. But fortunately for us, they're wanting to already do a Phase 2 potentially, which means they, I think they've been exploring something like 18 more utility poles. Usually, they send us a list, and then, I think the last time Peter and I jumped in the Ford Lightning EV and drove around and took a look at these different poles. But PGE's been the one kind of, at least so far, communicating with adjacent neighbors and exploring kind of the infrastructure requirements. And it's been very kind of weirdly easy, which is so lovely to have.
Well, I would say it hasn't been without any hiccups. So, I mean, as PGE's had some challenges on figuring out how to best install these chargers on the poles to make sure that they're safe, because there's a couple of different zones on the poles, there's, you know, their electric lines that generally are on the top of the poles, and then there's a communications sort of corridor for, you know, Comcast and other telecommunications providers. So, they're putting this electric infrastructure on these poles, and they need to make sure that they're meeting, it's the National Electric Safety Code as they're doing this, to make sure that they're protective of other users that have attachments on those poles. They've also had some challenges just in getting the equipment that they're using. So, you know, you use an app to scan a barcode on the pole, and it's supposed to lower a charger that you can then plug into your car, and they've had some hiccups and challenges going through that, so...
And that's, I mean, you can actually see in this picture, it's kind of, it's challenging, but you see that there's a lighter gray box, and then a lower darker gray charcoal box. Right underneath that, there's like a little white plug with a black tip, that's actually the charger, like the part that clicks in. And, you know, part of having it kind of up the pole is just, you can't really have a big old cord block in the right-of-way and strewn across the street, so it's kind of, they're having to balance, you know, how to keep the equipment safe, people safe, also navigating these, you know, actually just being on the utility poles.
The city manager had her...
Councilor Massey and I were going to ask the same question, so I'm going to defer to him.
Before we ask the question, I want to give you an observation. One of these demo chargers is across the street from my house, and I will tell you that the work on that began 15, 16 months ago. And every few months, I see a fleet of PGE trucks come up, and a committee of five or six people stare at the utility pole, and sometimes there's a little work, and, you know, I always go out there and say, what's up, guys? And the answer's always like, we're hooking it up. It's not operational, it is not operational, okay? And, you know, that's my observation, and so, I guess my question is, what the heck is going on? I mean, you know, we talk, you know, I read in the paper all the time about, there's a lack of EV infrastructure. I go, well, yeah, if we can't get one of these things operational in a year and a half, then yeah, we got a lack of EV infrastructure, so...
But are you saying the ones that are pilot phase are actually operational?
Well, I think that the input that we got from PGE were those four...
The all of them?
Were operational, the ones that were in the demonstration phase were fully operational several months ago, at least. Sounds like maybe this one is...
Okay, I'm going to go out on a limb, because I'm not watching the thing 24 hours a day, I don't think anyone's ever plugged up there, and it's not marked on the street that it's EV parking only.
And so, that's actually something that we were trying to work with PGE on, you know, I've, we've asked about, because one of the challenges I see is, it's kind of almost like hidden, you know, utility pole, eye kind of goes over it, that's tied to some of the regulations, they're not allowed to do a lot of wrapping or marking on the poles. And then, for the striping, I think, do you want, are you saying something about?
I was just going to say, the one, often the one way that people find the chargers are using like PlugShare, so there's a map, and it'll say that that's where they are. I have seen several of these available on PlugShare, not all of, not the other 17, I can't speak to which ones I've seen, but I know there's one, they are the ones in the historic Milwaukee neighborhood have shown up on PlugShare.
Well, I'm motivated now, I'm going to download the app, the shell, because that's the one that you've got to use across there.
PGE, so PGE, you want to make sure to check in on PGE's website, and then they'll have a whole webpage on it for their charging apps.
It's marked on the utility pole.
For Shell?
Yeah. Please let us know your experience.
Yeah, okay, I'll do a little science experiment, okay?
Yeah, I'd love to hear it.
Not optimistic.
Well, that's great feedback, that you can feedback. Yeah, and you know, I think that Portland also has, I think, some on-pole chargers, so I think we're in a bit of a testing phase.
And I know that I've heard that there's, even with our own charging stations, there's always a challenge with both the hard infrastructure, but then also the software for payment and all sorts of systems. So, I'll poke into it, and I'll see if maybe there's a little more investigation.
I'll try to plug into it.
Oh, there we go. Okay, we'll both work on this, we'll report back. All right. Okay, you want to take this one off?
Sure, sure. One of the other things we wanted to talk about this afternoon or this evening is our stormwater system plan. So, one of the strategies that we had identified as an added patient strategy in our natural resources section of our plan was to go through and update our stormwater system plan. And the focus of that was to really take a look at developing sort of climate, new climate projections, and how they would impact the city of Milwaukee. So, we're working with Water Systems Consultant, we signed a contract with them this past summer to start working on our stormwater system plan. And what they're doing is developing those climate change projections, and what are those impacts to those climate change projections as it relates to our weather and rainfall that we see in the community, and looking and assessing how those projections are going to impact, as I mentioned, precipitation, and generally the regional hydrology, like our water flow in our riparian corridors that we have. We've got Johnson Creek and Kellogg and the Willamette, and that run through the city, or on the outside of the city, and look at what we're going to see in the future, and help us develop, you know, future design criteria that factors in these impacts and changes to precipitation, both in terms of, you know, changing rainfall frequency and And from that, you know, we expect certainly to have future design, stormwater design criteria that we're going to use to help us build our, and maintain our stormwater systems.
This is a super exciting one, if you like to get into the nuts and bolts of stormwater regulations, which is a new world that I'm now fascinated with. Any questions?
Any questions from anyone?
All right, and so, the final thing that we're here, just to update you on, and it's going to be a fast update, is saying we will be back for tree code. We've been looking at just kind of cleaning up the code that we have adopted for our public and our private residential tree code. This is after conversations with, you know, our code compliance team and our own staff as we're working on enforcement, and also just talking to community members and other staff just around, you know, the readability of the code, but then also, you know, some maybe loopholes in enforcement we didn't realize, just based on the structure of the code, and then a few other tweaks now that we've been implementing the code in our permitting system for a little over a year or so. And so, you know, we just, the intent behind this is not to change the code, really, it's just around the structure. For example, placement of violation section, turns out that's impactful, and we might need to repeat it, and et cetera. So, Tim from Code Compliance is helping us, he's actually taking the first wave of restructuring, which I really appreciate, and then we're going to be just coordinating with our planning team and community development team, because our tree codes referenced through our zoning code and all these other sections. And then, we're, our urban forester, Courtney Wilson, she's actually going to be here in the spring to bring back code updates. And in the meantime, of course, if folks have questions on our tree code, they're definitely encouraged to reach out to Courtney. I have our urbanforest@milwaukeeoregon.gov email there, we also have our urban forest kind of phone number, and we're over at our Johnson Creek facility, if folks want to stop by.
Uh, Councilor Massey?
Uh, refresh me about what we were going to do to measure the tree canopy going forward.
Yeah, so tree canopy is measured in a variety of ways, some more expensive than others. So, right now, what we've been doing is using LiDAR data, and what that is, it's light data, so essentially light pulses that they fly over an airplane over the metro area, and they have little light beams go down, and when it hits the surface, it bounces back up, and it's able to penetrate tree canopy and go down to the ground and bounce back up, so we can actually tell where there's canopy across the landscape. It's also how we kind of get land-type covers, and so Metro is the one who actually runs these flights and... And so Metro is the one who actually runs these flights and all cities in the metro kind of chip in on cost and say, we want this data, we want that. And so they do that every three years or so, but it does take time for them to process it, which, you know, it's a snapshot. So it's challenging in the urban area because as we know, trees go down very fast and the urban landscape changes really fast. So on top of it, some communities do full tree inventories and that's how they better track maybe on a more kind of boots-on-the-ground way of what our current canopy is. LiDAR is definitely a more cost-effective way for us to do it, at least at this time. So what we're going to essentially have to do is use that LiDAR data and every four or so years, five years, kind of see how we're progressing. And then also, you know, implement things like our tree code to hopefully protect more of the trees so we see less of that volatility of canopy through the urban area. Right now, you know, the change between, we've had two LiDAR flyovers, we've had one in 2014 and one in 2019. And we actually saw, I think, like a 1% decline in canopy between those two LiDAR flyovers. And that's actually before, of course, our tree code was adopted. So I'm really curious to see what this next round is going to be. But, you know, 1%, again, it's really difficult to tell because, you know, based on development in the urban area, 1% of Milwaukee's landscape is not that big, right? And so we're really going to be like our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, having to track it over time. Of course.
Yes, thank you. Question on, are we, we still don't have like a commercial tree code, right? Or like a commercial development tree code? Because I feel like that's where we might, well, it's not where we might, it's probably where we're going to see most of our loss of trees and canopies when those 172-unit market rate unaffordable apartments go in, right? So how, like, where are we on that? Because I know we've been working on that.
Yeah. So right now for our tree code, of course, we have our public tree code. We have our private residential, which is really supposed to be hitting private property on residentially zoned properties. That's the majority of Milwaukee's residential. That's, I think, where we also saw 80% of our canopy when we were originally exploring this. It was also opportunistic on when we were doing our housing code update. You know, commercial tree code, I would say is, it's something we're still interested in doing. I think the limiting factor is staff capacity at this time, but it's still kind of in our urban forest management plan and kind of in our hopes and dreams that we're going to get there. And I think it's really just a matter of capacity and resources.
I prefer that than a loss of, you know, willingness to work on that.
Yeah, and as Natalie mentioned, the majority of our urban forest canopy is on residential, residentially zoned properties. You know, many of the industrial and commercial properties tend to be those more urbanized, lots of, you know, impervious surface industrial areas that there's not a whole lot of canopy to begin with. But that means there's opportunities for planting and maybe growing canopy there. So, you know, working with planning and as, you know, on new developments to identify those and try to grow canopy on some of those sites would be helpful as well.
Yeah, and that was kind of, you know, the opposite of that, right? Is instead of like saying, don't cut this tree out and say, okay, well, now you have to meet a certain standard in terms of the amount of canopy you provide on the property. But also, the incident that happened at, I think it was that Triangle Park where that tree was cut down and the developer was wasn't supposed to do that, they were only hit with a less than $1,500 fine. And well, that doesn't really do much. If we had more protections in place, I feel like maybe the developer would have taken it a little bit more seriously in protecting it, so.
Yeah, I think that's definitely, you know, when we're coming back with the tree code proposal and the cleanup, we're also probably going to be, we already adopted those fee schedule changes, but that's also an opportunity to look to see if that's an appropriate amount of, you know, enforcement or violation charges. The other thing on commercial property that isn't, I think, still on the horizon is the climate-friendly equitable communities kind of work. I think planning was here before around maybe some of those parking lot requirements. They had canopy coverage included in those standards. I'm not sure where the status is on that. I think that it's actually caught up a little bit in some lawsuits and I think they're pausing some of the requirements. But that was, you know, requiring at least with a creation of like, I think it's a quarter acre parking lot to have like 50% connected canopy on the lot. Of course, that was going to take a little nagging on our end if we knew how we were going to apply it, but I still think that that's a great, you know, hopefully we can implement it in Milwaukee.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Of course.
I think, I mean, first off, we have two creeks that go through our industrial areas. We have Johnson Creek and we have Menthorn Creek on International Way. I do, my sense is that International Way has a lot, has places where there is capacity to plant more trees. They have more green space generally, but a lot of it's just big lawn. The North Industrial doesn't have as much green space except right along, right along the creek, I guess. But I do think there's some potential there to, you know, try to work with businesses or get volunteers who want to come out and do tree plantings or whatever. I mean, I do think there's some space in the International Way and I would really love to see a little bit more shaded shade over our creeks. You know, that's all about keeping the water cool for the salmon and everything else. So anyway, I do feel like there's some potential for adding tree canopy in some of our industrial.
And that's definitely wrapped up. So the city, not to get too deep in stormwater again, the city has regulations to say that we need to be doing things like riparian restoration to keep the water cool. We actually do give some funds to North Clackamas Watershed Council and Johnson Creek Watershed Council for both spring, streamside stewards in their, for North Clackamas and then creek care for Johnson Creek for private property restoration adjacent to riparian areas, which almost always includes trees. And it's something we report on, so it's definitely valuable for Milwaukee.
Other questions from anyone? Okay. Is that the?
I don't have a question, it's more of a comment. LiDAR is also used to hunt for Bigfoot.
I mean, he's pretty good at baiting it, so I don't know how successful it is.
If we have our better tree cover, we might give him more protection. Okay, well, if no more questions for Natalie, well, thank you for the presentation and move on to our second council goal update, which is we'll have Assistant City Manager Emma Sager and Equity and Inclusion Coordinator Gabriela Santoyo-Gutierrez on our climate, I mean, our Equity Council Goal. Oh, we're getting a report. We're getting a.
Gabriela is handing out a printed version of the Equity Plan that we'll be discussing tonight. There's a minor edit that was, that we made today, so we didn't have a chance to update the packet, but we'll flag what that edit is. It's very minor. And we've added that to the record with Nicole. Good evening, Mayor, Council President and Councilors. I'm Emma Sager, Assistant City Manager, and really excited to be here tonight to give you an update on your Equity and Inclusion Council Goal. This is a really exciting and important milestone, I think, in the city's equity work and equity process. We are here to present a comprehensive equity plan to you and we're really excited to tell you how this has been informed by our recently completed equity assessment, lots of deliberation and discussion with the Equity Steering Committee, and then just great work by this wonderful person next to me who you're going to hear mostly from tonight. I just get to tee things up.
All right. I did want to add this one more quick point. I was very emotional and inspired watching your last week council session, hoping going into this, there won't be any crying involved. But I think it's okay to.
Crying is good. Crying is, yes. So again, the action that we're requesting tonight is really that you receive an update and then we will be asking you to adopt a resolution in support of this three-year comprehensive equity plan that we put together. I'll give a little bit of a backstory of just how we got to this point, then hand it over to Gabriela, who's going to walk you through the three tracks of the plan. We'll take any discussion and questions and then ask you to consider that resolution. So how we got here, I'll keep this pretty brief. We talked a lot about this the last time we were here in October, but, you know, equity has been a discussion and a topic that's been important in Milwaukee for a very long time. But in 2020, the murder of George Floyd really led to a national reckoning with racial justice and council took action to adopt equity, inclusion, and justice as a goal at that time, really solidifying this city's commitment to the hard work and the important work of advancing equity internally in our operations, but also in terms of the services we provide the community. A year later, in August of 2021, you all created the Equity Steering Committee of amazing volunteers, one of whom is here tonight, and we may have some others joining us online as well, but who have been meeting, you know, monthly since then and working tirelessly to advise and drive this work within the city. I mentioned the Keene Assessment. In 2022, we contracted with Keene Independent Research to do that independent, objective assessment of equity and disparities in city services and in the community to really help us understand where those disparities exist. We did a lot of work coming out of 2020 to address some critical, timely, important work with our police services and then other internal policies. But this assessment really helped us take a bit of a broader view of where we really need to lean in to advance equity work. That assessment took a year to do. We presented those results to you in the fall. We also had a bit of a leadership change in our Equity and Inclusion Program. Gabriela came on. It is only Gabriela's fourth month on the job, if you can believe that. In four months, she has done an incredible amount of work. And so in October, we came and we presented the results of the assessment as well as where we as staff were sitting with that work, where we thought we should lean in, and also where our Equity Steering Committee felt they should lean in for the work ahead. That then leads us to today. We've taken your input, we've taken ESC's input, we've had a lot of other discussions that Gabriela's going to go to. But I just, before I hand it over to her, I want to again say, in four months, Gabriela has really taken the reins on this work, has led with such passion, empathy, and true relationship building. She's going to talk a little bit about that tonight, but I'm incredibly proud of her. I'm incredibly proud of the plan she's put together and I'm excited to hear your thoughts on it tonight. So over to Gabriela.
Thank you, Emma, and it's good to see all of you as well. Now, to kind of get us into sharing the main purpose of this meeting and kind of just talking about the equity plan we've drafted together for the next three years, I emphasize draft here. Emma and I call this a living document as our goal is to be, to stay as flexible in this process, especially we want to make it as meaningful as possible. And we'll make sure that any changes going forward are quarterly updated to council as well. Now, on the presentation, you'll also see that the way we've organized and structured these action items, organized into three different tracks, and that we'll go over together and how that's going to be also incorporated, excuse me, we'll go over together how that's going to be incorporated, all three tracks also into the forthcoming 2024 strategic plan, coming up updates as well later. But this main point, we're going to dive into what these three tracks are. And then that bottom section that we have as well, too, is talking about the assessment strategy and measures of success, which are also potential tracks for measuring that, those list of performance measures for equity. Now, in transition, us diving into that track one, these first tracks are actions led by me, your Equity and Inclusion Coordinator, in case that wasn't cleared yet. But essentially brainstorming in these action areas, the intention behind this is how do we kind of begin to standardize this approach in a way that is consistent and manageable? In other words, when people ask what I do, these are the main core focus points and areas I'll be sharing. And this includes our staff trainings, material and resource development, relationship building, and planning and policy updates. Now, some of these examples include specifically speaking to staff trainings. For example, I've implemented the monthly and kind of reorganized the monthly virtual and live equity chats that are open to all staff that cover DEI topics, that's diversity, equitable inclusion topics. And then in the process of organizing department-focused workshops led by other professional consultants, we may also bring in as equity practitioners. And then this also includes yearly online mandatory equity trainings that are going to be in partnership with our HR and our Human Resource Director. Now, that second portion of that material and resource development, some of this work also looks like updating our existing engagement guide to be more robust in equity framework, and that's in partnership with Jason Wax, who's our Community Engagement Coordinator, as well as updates to the city's ethics and reporting equity line. That's in partnership with our finance and our IT departments. And then also developing eventually a community groups/stakeholder map database. And then for that third portion of that relationship building, this is going to look more of, I'm like, how do we standardize that relationship building piece? And that for me looked like kind of setting monthly drop-in hours with each of our different departments. So this included specifically starting with I host and engage with monthly public drop-in hours at public works with our Milwaukee Police Department and as well as our library. This also looks like engaging in our monthly employee resource groups or affinity groups. And then as well as eventually, we'll get to the community-based, or I'll get to the community-based organization that include youth-based, youth-focused, disability-focused, and direct service provision groups. And so that's kind of tying into that relationship building piece. And then for that fourth and last part of kind of leading this, as I lead this work, it's planning and policy updates. So this, it looks like supporting our city's annual events program to incorporate more multicultural and inclusive events, serving on our strategic planning steering committee and advise, and advising on ongoing strategic plan monitoring and implementation. And then this also looks like partnering with our Human Resource Department for employee policy reviews and any updates that's needed. And that kind of ties in that first track of what that work I'll lead. Yeah. Desi, our President and Equanimous.
Sure. If, I mean, if you are okay with taking questions.
I'm okay with that.
Otherwise, I forget. I just, when you do the monthly drop-in.
Yeah.
Hours.
Right.
Is that just you or are other folks in there to support you?
Yeah. I'm setting, I'm setting that standard of first, it's me, but I'm going to go forward encouraging our other staff. One of those previously was actually also our HR, one of our specialists before who dropped in during enrollment time to be, they're available for any questions for our staff, so potentially with HR, but I can see it moving forward with our other departments.
Anybody want to add?
So this was her idea and it was a really smart one. It's not one that we've done a lot of. All of us have been doing more ride-alongs and trying to spend more time with the staff to connect and better understand where people are at. But I love the idea and I'm happy to always go for two.
I just want to make sure that you're supported, right? So like, if you're having these drop-ins, right? It's also, it's also good to have a white face in that room so you don't, like, people don't target you that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And so making sure that someone else is in there to like, you know, in this world we live in, unfortunately, we have to have white people to justify why we're doing this, right? They'll look to, you know, if I'm sitting next to Robert, they'll be like, well, okay, I hear you, Desi, but let me look at Robert to make sure that it's right. Do you know what I mean? And I just want to make sure that you're also not having to bear the brunt of someone who hasn't bought in to equity.
Right.
You know, because we don't want to lose you. And it's, this is what. And it's, this is, once again, I'm always concerned about the human being behind doing all this work, because it is not easy. So that's, that was my concern.
No, I appreciate that, President Nicodemus. So far, this, I've completed so far this month and last month, and that hasn't come up, that hasn't been my experience so far at all. But when it comes to it, if it does, and I haven't felt that way at all, then I'm going to ask my appropriate supporters as needed, and that usually includes Emma and Ann. But something I actually didn't ask for, and that happened, was actually the directors, like Chief Police, Chief of Police Luke Straight stepped in and was in with me in that process and in that space, as well as Shane and Ronnie, so they were both with me in those spaces, without me asking as well. Yeah, and Brett as well, from the library director.
And just again, to give her kudos, you know, four months on the job, she's already met one-on-one with every single director. Again, this was an idea that Gabriella had. She's really taken the initiative to build those relationships, and, but I really echo what Desi said, and we are here to support you whenever and however you need.
Yeah, thanks. All right, yeah, let's move forward. So on track two, so for this one, wait, let me adjust my notes. So for this one, I think Emma already shared, we passed out the most recently revised document of the draft equity plan in equitable procurement that was not in the previous staff report and resolution resources we shared with you. So the one in front of you is including the equitable procurement component as part of some of ESC's, the Equity Steering Committee's priority areas. So for this track, we kind of focus overall on, these are, these are specifically the list of topics and potential deliverables that the Equity Steering Committee have identified for the next two to three years. And I did want to add in there that in our November meeting, they requested more time to discuss the prioritization and the scheduling of approach that we're going to take on with these topics, that we'll continue and pick back up in our January meeting. And some of these, if you look as well, are the same ones we presented in our October session, October 17 session, which includes that communication, transparency, and storytelling, our recruitment, hiring, and retention, engagement pathways, naming of spaces and places, accessibility, and that equitable procurement. Now, we do have an ESC member in person, as mentioned tonight, and we may have some potentially online question marks. So if any of them want to add any additional comments, I want to provide some space for them.
The only thing I have to say is, I agree, having, both Gabriella and Emma are just amazing, and we miss you, but they're pretty, pretty amazing, and I think with the transition in staffing and stuff, I appreciate the leadership and guidance that they've given us, and yeah, and thank you for your patience, as, you know, we're trying to do this right as a group and, you know, be equitable in the process and really make sure we have a strong foundation before we move forward too fast and, you know, make any missteps that might send us down the wrong direction.
Later, please introduce yourself.
Oh, hello, I'm Liz Start. Use she/her pronouns. I am on the Equity Steering Committee and also Linwood NDA, Neighborhood Chair.
Any questions for Liz? She's also our Volunteer of the Year last year. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
And Nicole, are there any other folks tuning in online? I just want to make sure if there were any ESC members online that...
We have one person, I don't think that there are any ESC.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you, Liz, thank you for being here. Great. I'll transition this then to our third track, which is the major city initiatives with an equity nexus. This table reflects some of the major initiatives that I will be supporting and the ESC may also be supporting and by advising on for the next couple of years. And some of these on the table include the cooling, warming, and stabilization shelters led by the City Manager's Office, the Transportation System Plan, that is also called, and I'm still in the process of learning acronyms, the TSP, and that's led by community development. There's also the Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP, led by community development and Public Works. There is the Neighborhood Hubs, led by community development as well. And then we have the Parks Development and Governance, led by the City Manager's Office and Public Works as well. And there may be a few more ongoing as well, but these are some of the main ones who have approached us, and if not, I've already engaged in some conversation and part of their planning work.
The only thing I'd add on that is, you know, this, Gabriella, in her opening, that part of putting this plan together is really get our arms around and be able to managably talk about what this equity program, and currently Team of One, very supportive by others, but Team of One can take on. And I think one thing that we've struggled with is we want to apply an equity lens in all of our work, or we want to apply an equity framework in all of our work. Liz taught me we shouldn't say equity lens, and I completely agree, and I'm trying to retrain myself. But in doing that, Gabriella is one person, and Gabriella can't be in every single project meeting doing every single thing. So the reason these five initiatives are on here is because these are citywide, major, large-scale, multi-year projects and efforts, that if Gabriella, you know, in her limited time is going to lean in and be on those project teams and be giving that strategic advice, this is where she needs to focus her time. It doesn't mean the other work won't apply that equity framework. She'll work to develop the resources that let those project managers do that themselves.
I also emphasize, this is the plan for the next three years, not the next couple months, so.
May I add just quickly, the other piece that doesn't show up here, and it showed up in the first one, is that a big part of this is our hiring processes, so I just want to make sure that we call that out here, that either Gabriella or members of the ESC or other, other staff who care about equity are sitting in on those interview panels, in particular for ones that are higher-level positions in organizations and have supervisory responsibilities, or have undue powers, so things like our police department. Thanks.
That kind of for this last part of this draft plan we're proposing for you all today and presenting, is that potential kind of brainstorm of, okay, these are great ideas, but how are you going to measure and track them? So these are kind of some areas we're potentially focusing on that assessment strategy and measures of success, which include that focus of that work culture, and this can look like measuring job satisfaction and trust and leadership. Staff competency, which could include the number of staff participating in that equity trainings, staff diversity and representation, right, or makeup of our staff and workforce, as well as who speak other languages, our community disparities and inclusion, right? And then as well as city investments, which can also look like percentage of contracting dollars awarded during the COVID certification contractor system. Now, this basically kind of wraps up that draft plan proposal document that you have in front of you most up to date. And then with that, I'll transition it back to Emma.
Thanks, Gabriella. So in terms of what our next steps are, as we mentioned, the Equity Steering Committee next meets in January, they wanted a little more time to take those six focus areas, talk a little bit about prioritization, how they want to tackle them, how they want to make decisions and work together as a committee or in those spaces. So we're, we're going to work with them on that and keep refining there. As Gabriella mentioned, this is a three-year plan, and it's meant to be part and parcel of our three-year organizational strategic plan that we've spoken to you about. These are not going to be separate documents. It's really important to me that, that these are one in the same, so we're going to be integrating and implementing all of the actions from this into that organizational strategic plan. And then we're asking you tonight to adopt a resolution in support of this work. Before we do that, you know, we would really like to hear from you on a few things about, you know, we've, we've, the minimum, we're going to be providing quarterly updates to you on this process. Gabriella provided a real great high-level overview here. She has her own work plan, which is month by month, how she's taking on different pieces of this. So it's, it's, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of moving pieces, but she's really up to the challenge. We want to hear how you'd like to stay engaged and up to date on that, and also how we can help tell the story of equity. We have seen through the Keene Equity Assessment, as well as our most recent community survey, which the data is hot off the presses, that we need to do a better job of explaining why equity matters in Milwaukee and what equity work means in Milwaukee. That, I think, is a big knowledge gap for a lot of our constituents and community members, and we're working on that. I think today, you were provided with some draft one-pagers that try to tell the story of our equity goal. We would love to hear your thoughts on that, but what other ideas do you have for how we as staff can help you tell the story of the work you want to see moved forward under this goal? We are all ears, and we are excited to roll up our sleeves and get creative in that space. So that's the end of our presentation. I'll leave this slide with questions up, and we'd love to hear what questions you have for us.
Okay. I will say, I haven't gotten to look at, the thing that was distributed was distributed as I was leaving home, so I haven't.
We actually have it on the discussion for January 2nd, so you have several weeks to look at it.
People who have questions or who have answers to questions posed by staff? Counselor, I see.
Yeah, I think this, I understand. This whole idea of outreach, I think, is important. I, you know, is any consideration being given to, you know, to take this story to, you know, to Emma's point about what it is and why it's important? Is any consideration being given to, you know, taking that message out into a, you know, to the NDAs at one of their meetings or something like that? Neighborhood districts.
Right, yeah, explaining the, right, the acronyms. Yes, for our NDAs. That I know of so far, I know for sure we've incorporated and partnered with our communications manager to include it in the pilot as some updates that we're sharing. I think right now NDAs are also going in some other heavy discussion in their organization, but I have eventually going to partner with Jason Wax, our Community Engagement Coordinator as well, to have some presentation materials with them up soon in the next couple of months. But I know the pilot, NDA engagement, as we also have across, right? As Liz also shared, she's also a member of the NDAs, too, so where are these, where can we have potential to share our staff who are already involved in both of these committees and NDAs to have some overlap in report sharing? Those are the main two that I can think of so far.
Yeah, I think absolutely. I think when, you know, ESC says one of their top priorities is communication and storytelling, I think we're, we're going to also listen and follow their lead on, on how best we get this word out. Gabriella's right, we have a lot of NDA overlap in terms of leadership on that committee and our NDAs, so that's, that's exciting, but I, I think, I think that's a great avenue, and there's a lot of things we probably haven't even thought of in terms of ways we can, we can be getting this story out and partner with, with our community organizations to do so.
I just always, I'm sorry, I just always fall back on the NDAs, because if you look at the hierarchy of communications affecting this, pilots are wonderful, you know? I like the pilot, but by far, the most effective way to communicate with anyone is, you know, one-on-one communication. And yeah, it would be one on 15 or whatever, but I don't know, Liz, do you have any thoughts about this? Yeah. I mean, I think you're uniquely qualified to give us some insight here.
Well, something that I've thought for a while is our NDAs need exposure to this work that's being done, and I agree, you know, and I think we, Linwood NDA, probably because it's the best one, if that's on the record, has, is probably one of the best-attended ones, but yeah, like 15, you know, folks, but still, it's, you know, it's kind of like that word of mouth, too. Like, oh, the city's doing this great work, you know, and I'll try and mention it, but not to the level of the great work that Gabriella is doing and really getting that exposure, because, you know, we're trying to build a better and stronger community, and getting into the community is the way to do it. So, yeah, I think that's, that's a great approach, and I think our, you know, our leader, NDA leadership across the board also needs to make sure we're at the same level and, you know, that we're creating inclusive environments for our neighbors to come to our meetings, too, because that is a great outlet, you know, to reach folks. And if we're not building an inclusive environment at our level as community members, then what's the point of doing it if it's the same old template?
That's great, you know, that's a great place to go in, in terms of reaching people who may not be in, active in their NDAs. I just, there's very few opportunities that are better for reaching Milwaukee citizens than the Milwaukee farmers' market.
Hundred percent.
Which comes back in, in May, first Sunday in May, so booths at the farmer's market or booths in front of the old City Hall, if that's still allowed, that capture people coming out of the farmer's market are a great way to engage with people.
No, I agree, and I was just going to add, and you're right, not everybody has access to NDAs, right? And it's often the most marginalized communities who have a hard and difficult time accessing, right, community involvement, community engagement. So one of those other topics that was brought up in the ESC was social media, as well as potentially, I'm tomorrow also attending the North Clackamas School District Equity Director there, and we're about to have conversations around how they engage with their marginalized communities and their approaches into how do we cross-collaborate reaching those parents in their parenting conferences and connections there as well, too.
Great, great. Counselor, Council President Nicodemus?
I would agree with what you said, Emma, about there's a gap in understanding what equity is, because I think when people hear equity, they just think race, and it's a lot more than just that. And, you know, educating people on what equity actually is, whether it's racial equity, gender equity, disability, you know, I think people need to learn more about it, because some folks that, and I'm sure we've all run into them, where you say equity, and they shut down, because it's going to be like, oh, he's going to talk about race, and it's like, nope, it's more than just that. So how do we teach people and educate people that equity is more than just one thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did want to add in there, President Nicodemus, I think you're even talking about that education at that community level. A lot of, I also caught myself in into this, this plan, a lot of it is how am I educating our own staff and their workforce development and training? And a part of that is going into what's going on with strategic planning, with budgeting, right, how we allocating our money and resources, but I love that conversation, how do we get that out into the community as well, and to have those discussions? Did just want to add in, because I do see these gooses, I'm hearing, some of that work is actually collaborating with our library, who do community and city events. We're hosting in the spring series a community discussion series, where they book and, where they bring in authors who are having these conversations at the community level. So that is one of the support I'm engaging in as well. Open to hearing any other thoughts.
Great. Counselor, Staventor?
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this, and thank you to all of the community members who were involved. The conversation about involving the NDAs is, is interesting to me. I mean, I was also involved in NDAs for a number of years, but one of the larger challenges, I think, is making sure that the NDA reflects our community and the makeup of our communities has a lot to do with creating that welcoming environment. And, and that is, I mean, that gets to like where we meet, what time we meet, what sort of supports are in place for community members to be there, and, and also the language that we use, too. One of the things that's been on my mind for a long time, and it seems like this is a good time to bring it up, is we often talk about engagement to our community members, and we use the word citizens. I'd really love us to just say residents or community members, because it's, I feel like it can be really exclusionary for some of the folks who live here in Milwaukee and call Milwaukee home. And I, I would really want us to focus on, you know, how we can get the most people involved, and that starts with making folks feel really welcome. So I guess I also think about your question, you know, around how we would like to be engaged in this work, and it seems like maybe helping with some of the conversations with the NDAs about what culture change or culture shift, you know, in terms of Milwaukee's model of community engagement, what that looks like, and how the NDAs want to be involved, challenges that they might see, things like that. It seems like an area where, you know, we all represent different geographic areas of the city. the city, and even just connecting with, you know, a couple of NDAs within our reach or something, you know. I really appreciate that you said that that's a three-year plan, not a couple of months plan, and I want to temper my excitement about this. But I, you know, I'm also kind of thinking about the ways where we can amplify the work that you're doing and the conversations you're having, and I'd really like to be a part of that. So, thank you.
Counselor Stavendor, if I can just add, I, one thing I'm really excited about, both in this work and in our strategic plan work, is I think we're really growing up as a data-driven organization too, and by that I don't mean depersonalizing or dehumanizing this work into just numbers. There's qualitative data, stories are data, all of this is data, but I think the, one thing I'm really excited about, and it's not going to happen overnight, it's part of the three-year plan, but is building out our toolkit of indicators for how we're tracking impact of our equity work, and I think that becomes such important information to talk with neighborhoods about. So I think if we can wrap our arms more around what disparities we're seeing in our community, and to Council President Nicodemus's point, the intersectionality of that, it's going to make a lot of these conversations, I think, more real and more relevant for our neighborhood organizations, and so I really much appreciate your willingness to partner with us on that, and I think that the data element of this is going to be a really cool tool in our toolbox as we do that.
I just wanted to thank you all for the work. It's a lot of work and it's hard work, and just wanted to shout out Liz, that's my NDA chair. So it's, when I read this document and things in here, what I carry out of this most is the accountability, right, that you guys are applying to the city, right? And I think that's the biggest key, because it's basically holding people accountable for what they're saying, right, for what we speak about, what we talk about, what we say our goals are. This document is the accountability factor that, and you can't be successful in anything you try to accomplish without accountability. So I thank you for that because it's so important. I like the youth engagements and the calendar events. That's interesting too, because there are a lot of events that are not on the calendar that we could hold these events, you know, what I thought about, obviously, since being Muslim, I thought about, you know, Ramadan celebration, you know, to celebrate the end of Ramadan, because that's usually what you do, even on the Persian calendars, the Persian New Year in March that we celebrate, and there's, you know, consists of jumping over the fire and a lot of cool things for young kids, and these are things that can help teach the story, tell the story, right? Is also what can, how we can talk about why this is so important, you know, it's because it brings people together. When we have these events like tree lighting and solstice, just being able to mention that, hey, this is what brings us together, this, you know, we celebrate our differences this way, it's a great way to be able to do that and expanding that calendar, because then it also intrigues you, because you see something on a city calendar and like, I don't even know what that is, you start researching it, and then you're like, I'm going to go to that, and then it's just more people that are there to be able to share that story and have that retooled. So I really appreciate this, I support it, and again, I can't say enough about the work you've done since you've been here, and yeah, this accountability is important, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will say on the calendar point, you know, there's a limit to the capacity of the city to put on new events, but I do feel like there are events elsewhere in the community that we could maybe be helping to amplify. We don't do that much with our social media, we don't do that much with the pilot, and maybe we could be better about that in cases where, you know, not necessarily going to start a new city event, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, other community, yeah, there are others in the community could be, you know, putting on events for sure, and maybe there's a way to encourage that, you know, yeah. Okay, so, did you want to say something?
Okay. So a couple of things. First and foremost, when Gabriella first started her first week, she said she was going to say this story, but now I'm going to share it. We went out to lunch, and we talked about all the things that were going to be on her plate, and one of the things, one of her first questions to me was, is this an internal or an external position? And I smiled, because there's one person, and there's a lot of work. So I really appreciate you all understanding that, what we've said, and you get to correct this if it's wrong, but what we've said since the beginning is we were going to try and be better first. So we've been working on things like hiring and support of our staff and trying to make this organization something that we feel like represents the best of us, and that's where we've been spending some time this year. If that's not the right balance, let us know. The second piece is, I wanted to just go back to the term citizen. You actually have a critical moment. We already had a vote on it before this council was set, but then the bylaws never came back to you, which is that you actually have a citizen review committee. You have a citizen that is a utility advisory board, and we did not actually change it when we moved it underneath the budget committee. When they do their bylaws, we've asked them to change the terminology, so it's community instead of citizen, but anytime that you catch it and we don't, please let us know. It's something that we've been working on intentionally on our team, and we're happy to correct it as we see it, so please just call us on it. The next piece, speaking to Council President's statements about making sure that white faces are also owning some of this responsibility, I appreciate you, Counselor Stavendor, saying that you will go to the NDA meetings, but we can too, and I think that that's one of the things we're trying to balance out Gabriella's workload and making sure that she has the PowerPoints ready and all the things we want to make sure we're supportive and not diminishing of that work. So we'll work on that, and we'll try and make sure not only you have the tools that you would need to go to those, but that we also can go to some of those and help support that rollout to the community while she's spending so much time internally. I think those are all my comments that I wrote down, but thank you.
Great. Sure. I would love to see all of the, I mean, all of the council go out into community meetings with you, because it does signal that support, it does signal the commitment, it does signal that this is a priority for us, but I think that we do have to have a conversation about how best we can support you and members of the committee in those spaces, right, to recognize microaggressions and not unintentionally reinforce those in our community, or even worse, miss an opportunity to stand up and say something when, you know, micro or macro, right, like any type of aggression. And I'm not saying that that would be what you're met with, but I'm saying that, you know, those do have to be the tools that we take along, and it means a lot of conversation internally about, you know, how do we embody these values? What does that mean? When do we recognize things? I feel like that is a really important next step for our discussion amongst ourselves. And then, can I say one other thing?
But can I just tell you that we're going to do a retreat, and I think maybe it would be really helpful if we had a few slides that we could start talking about, about how we all discuss this and maybe some more additional training coming into next year for council and for us.
That'd be great.
Thanks.
So I know that some of the work has to do with looking internally at support for employees and the metrics that, you know, through which we measure success. I'm really interested in building out some even more specific systemic metric.
Measurements?
Metrics?
Yeah.
Measurements? Things like longevity in positions, the type of position and its positionality within the organization, pathways for leadership development, for management, for wage equity across those same classifications. I know that part of the plan mentioned regular diversity audits, and, you know, it made me think actually about the work, we had our redevelopment commission, community advisory committee meeting, and had, you know, a pretty good conversation about anti-displacement and how it comes into the discussion about urban redevelopment, right? I mean, we know that there's a really traumatic history with urban renewal areas, especially here in Portland and in the Portland area, but what role do we play as an institution that has privilege and has, you know, that vehicle to be able to revitalize our community and, you know, and how do we use that responsibly? So maybe those audits are in some of the areas of existing work, you know, like, could we look at our five-year action plan and think about as we develop out, you know, storefront improvement grants or pre-development, you know, grant programs, you know, can we provide preference points in the selection for applications that do embody an anti-displacement framework that do look at things like, you know, what collective action and micro enterprise, you know, could do for our city? So I'm interested in that sort of, you know, bucket of things, and I'm really excited to have a follow-up conversation, so I won't drone on anymore, but just thank you so much to everybody, and I know that there are others that are watching, but I'm looking at you, Liz. Thank you.
And while we just keep, while we keep showering Liz with praise, Liz also put us in touch with someone who's an expert in equity indicators, and we had a preliminary conversation with them, but I too get very jazzed about all of this stuff, and I think it's, there'll be the equity indicators for this, but, you know, back to the integration of this to our strategic plan, there should be that equity frame over all the things, whether we're measuring economic development, whether we're measuring climate work, whether, how are we looking at that through that frame of equity and equitable impacts?
And the really exciting thing is that when we get into the budget this year, you'll see these new indicators sitting inside of each of the departments as we're talking about how and what we're measuring, to make sure that people's focus stays on the right things. And again, because this team is amazing, these two individuals. Thanks.
I did also want to point out too, I am also so grateful to work with an incredible Equity Steering Committee, as this was also one of the one topics priorities. They mentioned that communication, storytelling, and transparency piece, that we can see, where is that history telling that we're talking about? And I've also been really impressed in getting to know Milwaukee, how much art we have around here in that storytelling piece, and also intentionality around what art and artists we're collaborating with, right, and what art we're representing, so just want to give you all kudos for that as well, too, that that's ongoing now.
Great, well, thank you. Can you guys clarify for us what it was that changed in this version? I think it was something in the ESC.
It was in the, in track two, and this was a staff error, and by staff, I mean Emma Segor error. We, in the version that wanted to do your packet, equitable procurement was left off that table as one of the six focus areas, and so we, and again, back to the Liz praise, it was Liz who caught the mistake, and was like, where'd that go? So thank you, Liz, and apologies for the error.
Okay. That doesn't warrant any changes to the resolution.
No, the resolution included it, as did the staff report, just the work.
Okay. This work plan also was actually all delivered to all staff today as well. We emailed it out to all our staff.
Nice, nice. Great. Anybody, well, any last things anyone wants to say before we get to the resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution supporting a multi-year equity work plan to measurably improve equity outcomes and address key priorities.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution supporting a multi-year equity work plan to measurably improve equity outcomes and address key priorities. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None heard, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriella and Emma, for all your work on this, and, yeah. We do have another thing we added to our agenda, so we're not actually ready to adjourn, but you do not have to sit here through the rest of it.
I'm on, we did all that without crying.
Okay, so what we added was a brief council reports session, section. Other counselors may have other meetings and other things they want to report on, but I wanted to report on a meeting that happened with the governor last week. It was a rather impromptu thing, sort of out of the blue. Three of the council members were invited, along with the city manager and the community development director, by the governor's office to meet with them at an off-site location. The, I gather that the governor's office thought they were not inviting a quorum, because the city manager went back and asked them about inviting the rest of the council. It was a, I'm going to report on the meeting, and then I'll talk a little bit about, you know, awkwardness of, you know, having a meeting where all five counselors weren't invited. The meeting itself was largely, you know, sort of, as you would expect in a meeting with the governor, you're not talking in the weeds, you're talking at high levels of generality. You know, we all know housing is a priority of the governor, we talked some about housing, what she's, I think she mentioned a $500 million package she's putting together for the 2024 session for more, you know, affordable housing support, and I think $100,000 of that for shelter and rent stabilization to continue. We told her about what's being built, and Liz was largely staff, told her about what's being built in Milwaukee in terms of housing, the apartment, you know, the number of apartments we have coming, the hillside project, the, you know, some infill development in single family, and our first cottage cluster, our middle housing developments. We also let her know about the work being done, which we're just really getting into the early stages of, on a 24-hour mental health, or 23-hour mental health stabilization We talked about the need for more childcare resources and aftercare for schools, and on that score, I will say, I didn't see anyone else there today, but I went on the tour of the new facility over on Lake Road, and it's quite small, but it's a nice head start to head start classrooms over there. The, we spoke, I spoke about the Calogdamm, the council president, as an educator, spoke about education issues. I think we were not holding discussions, as it were, I mean, it was really more of providing her with information and receiving information from her. I wouldn't say we got into any big policy discussions. So I can stop with that. It was unfortunate that the full council wasn't invited. I felt somewhat at a loss as to my ability to correct that, although, you know, I maybe should have done more to try to correct that, but anyway, I wanted to put that out there. If any of the people who were there, I think of additional topics that they think I've omitted, please fill in the gaps. If any of the people who were there, uh, think of additional topics that they think I've committed, um, please fill in the gaps.
Uh, just the anti-displacement discussions that we had around, or not discussions, but statements that were made by Counselor Stavener for our urban renewal, thanks.
No, okay, I'll take that. No.
Well, I'm glad that you're bringing this up. I think it is really uncomfortable when, you know, not, when our entire council is not invited to something. And I think that we all come to this work with the best of intentions to work together as a team as much as possible. And so this, you know, an instance like this divides the team. And so I just, I want to make sure that, you know, and I'll follow up individually, um, but, you know, that you hear that um, that, you know, it's um, it's really unfortunate the way that it played out. And I think that this is also um an opportunity for us maybe to recommit to some values around council, but, you know, if there's an opportunity that is presented to some of us, we, we should be more vocal about it being an opportunity for us all. So I'll, I'll recommit to that, and I'm sorry to Roger, or to, to Robert and to Adam.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this up, Mayor. I was uh, I was more hurt than anything, um, not by the governor's invitation, because I I didn't need to be at the table, that that wasn't my concern. But I was more hurt by the lack of professional courtesy by fellow council members to at least inform two of us. So at least we had an opportunity to submit to you our concerns. Because the three of you got an opportunity to at least advocate for things you care about deeply, and the two of us did not. The truth be told, I I strongly believe I'm probably the most vocal advocate for for housing affordability on this council. To have that conversation and not be a part of it, it's upsetting. The way it went down on the governor's behalf is incredible. I understand all the secrecy, Robert and I are not security threats. We're duly elected officials who um are equals. And we should have at least had the opportunity to have a council discussion uh on, on topics that we'd like to have brought up. Because I would have loved to have at least considering the, the meeting we had on Tuesday, it would have been great to have at least a question asked on the state of mental health in Oregon, and that wasn't brought up. So it would have been, you know, it's it's just a, you know, it's just a trusting. And and again, I'm more hurt than anything, because I thought there was um more of that courtesy on council than was shown.
I don't know if you want to say anything? No, okay. Uh, okay, do you, do you have any other council reports they want to make? Looks like Counselor Stavener's right.
Well, it's just going to be like lightning round, because I um, I didn't have a chance to put notes together. I just wanted to let folks know that some of the um, there's the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, it's called the C4. Those uh, those meetings have been moved around a little bit because of the holidays. So the C4 Metro Subcommittee will meet tomorrow morning, 7:30. And then um Metro uh Policy Advisory Committee, which is kind of the, the other bookend um at a regional level to that, meets um tomorrow from 5 to 7. So um, I'll be at both of those meetings. We have moved from discussions of the regional transportation plan, which was um passed by Metro sans amendment from Clackamas County that was put it down in the vital stages of things. So we're moving into more of a discussion around um urban, um, the urban uh growth boundary and some of the planning that cities that are more closely connected to the growth boundary um you're having. So I know the mayor's involved in some of those too. And then I've mentioned a couple of times that the Community Advisory Committee for the Redevelopment Commission has um begun meeting. We reviewed um a really great um memo and kind of starting point of questions from Jonathan Southgate, who's providing um the technical support for us as we build out the grant programs for um pre-development, storefront and tenant improvements, which are the three main grant areas um outlined in the five-year action plan and kind of next steps for the CAC. I hope I summarized that okay. Joseph, if you're watching from home, let me know. The, the next step with that, um, everyone had an opportunity to um weigh in and kind of submit their thoughts. Um, after reading that memo, we'll reconvene um in uh, in a few weeks and um come together with like a second draft of that. So I wanted to share that. Um, and then um, if you're not getting enough transportation updates, uh, the transportation system plan um meetings have been just delayed slightly, um, but I anticipate that I'll have more of those coming in the new year. So that's, that's it on my end.
Trent Wilson is no longer the staffer for that, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct. Brian Hockaday is the staff person.
Okay, because I get some emails on those and I don't know, I've never figured out whether I get all the emails on those. But Trent's still at the county, just in another capacity?
Yeah, uh, it's my understanding that he moved more into like um the government affairs team.
Okay.
So there has been a period of overlap. But Brian is really well-seasoned with local government and um I don't think he's experiencing much of a learning curve. He's stepping in really nicely.
Okay, okay, great. Anyone else, anything else to report on? Okay. Okay, well, I will not be with you guys. I mean, I will be with you virtually next week, but not here in person, which is why I wore my Christmas hat today. The uh, uh, so yeah, I'll join you all by Zoom next week from maybe sunny Oklahoma. So that's it, we will, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None heard, we are adjourned.